Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the regular town council meeting. If I could get you to stand, please, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you leave us some room?
Yes, sir. Let's bow our head in prayer. Our gracious and kind heavenly Father, Lord, we again thank you for the opportunity to get together. We thank you for the privileges that we have today. Lord, we ask that you'll be with individuals who couldn't be here tonight regardless of the reasons. We ask that you'll be with this town council. You'll give them the courage and the wisdom to make the changes necessary. They're in the best interest of the town. Also, in your son's name, pray.
Please be seated. So first up, don't get too comfortable, Irma. Don't get comfortable. You're first up. Don't sit.
Don't sit.
So first on our agenda is the special presentation request. We have something special written out for a lady that has given quite a bit of her time and effort, blood, sweat, and tears to our little town. She currently owns a restaurant on Main Street. She was the founder of Tassel Today, and she continues to put, you know, a lot into this town that she loves. So Irma, if I could call you up, we have a resolution. You gotta smile. There we go. So, resolution of honor. Whereas Irma Mitchell saw the revitalization efforts of other southwest Virginia towns and was inspired to form a downtown revitalization nonprofit known as Tassel Today on March 26, 2015. And whereas Tassel's Main Street went from only attorney's offices and vacant buildings to a thriving commerce center at the heart of the community. And whereas the events held on Main Street by Tassel Today made Tassel a southwest Virginia destination and inspired entrepreneurs to open restaurants and retail shops. And whereas Irma herself took her savings and opened a restaurant on Main Street known as the Front Porch on Main. And whereas Irma's vision and investment has made a difference in the lives of many. And whereas Irma has sacrificed countless hours as a volunteer throughout the years, now therefore be it resolved that I, Michael Athus, Mayor of the Town of Tassel, and citizens concurring do hereby commend Irma Mitchell for her excellent community service and being a lifelong community leader. Adopted this 12th day of July, 2022. So this is the thing I'm happiest about because I have not got to do this in my three and a half years as mayor. We're gonna present you with the key to the town.
Does it fit the ball?
We'll talk about that. Maybe National Bank on Main Street. But thank you very much.
Thank you. It wasn't just me that made Tassel Today successful. It was a lot of people. At the first meeting, you know, we had those 50 people. So it was all of those people that made Tassel Today with the help of this town, the council, this... But anyway, thank you all so much. It's quite an honor. Thank you very much.
All right, next is new business recognition. T-Town Florist at 631 Freedom Avenue. Do we have a representative? No? Okay, next. And correct me if I pronounce it wrong. Is it the Bustin House?
Correct.
Well, come on up. We got goods. So how many does this make for you?
How many of what?
Isn't that a Airbnb?
Well, that would be more. Sorry. So the Bustin House is located right here at 269 Pine, adjacent to the town lot. It was just, I don't know, a big opportunity. A little lady that I've known for several years, you know, she decided to move away. She left her house empty for a couple of years, and she decided to sell. I decided to buy. And I let it stay empty for a year and...
Grant's program.
I'm speaking, sorry. So, you know, it's a really pretty house. The woodwork, the staircase, and everything it needed was pretty much cosmetic. The other things that needed, I just pulled the curtains so the coat guy couldn't look in. I was doing those things. But it turned out really well, and what I did, I brought in a couple of friends because I can do things, but I can never run an Airbnb. And I had one young lady that moved back to take care of her mom, and her background was marketing and banking. And Kim Smith, well, she handles all the technology part of it, she's getting it set up. And then Lisa Harry, I brought her in, and the two of them, they run, you know, some of the breaks, I fix it. It's a three-bedroom, two-bath. Biggest thing we had to do, we did a new roof, new heating system. A guy out of Princeton, Ron Beavers, did our floors, and he really, he made our house when he did the floors. So, you know, we are gonna have an open house in the next little bit. He won't be invited. But it turned out really nice, and it's just, you know, I guess I do things, I do it on several properties, but this is the first Airbnb. You know, I do things, you know, pretty much just to show my kids, my two boys, you know, you can do whatever you want as long as you do it the right way, you know, get your business life.
But don't run off unless, unless, we have to give you the...
You'll be for Danny.
To give you the Goff Town, Tassel Goff Town, and Tassel Town. So next is the Sleeping Dog Gallery. You wanna come up and tell us a little bit about this new business venture?
Okay, just a little, no drags.
So we kind of morphed former Business Bliss into the Lost Pearl Gallery and became one business, and it's the Sleeping Dog Gallery. The Sleeping Dog is Nancy Brooks's artist's moniker. Nancy, you all know, makes these beautiful jewelry pieces, statement pieces, beautiful glass work. We have a whole lot of her work in the gallery, so we have all of those beautiful things. We still have the clothes that I had from Bliss, and I just recently got my ABC license. So, yes, we have wine. And you can come in and do a free wine tasting, and then buy a bottle of wine. I do not have the major's favorite wine. I was not a fan, but maybe one day. Yeah, well, I have cheese. Oh, I have cheese. Oh, my gosh, I have the best cheese.
Very good cheese.
And cookies. Yes, gourmet food items. Good stuff. And you can come in and sample it all for free, and then buy some.
Well, let's get some rumors started here. Well, thank you all for taking a chance to continue business, opening a new business in the town of Tassel. We really do appreciate it. If it wasn't for the businesses and the entrepreneurs, we wouldn't survive. So we really do appreciate what you all are doing. So next is...
Hold on, wait, one second. Amanda will tell you that Dave is asking if you have MatDog or Binz Farm.
Only the best for you, Dave.
All right, next on the agenda, we need approval of minutes for the council meeting on June 14, 2022. Can I get a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? All in favor of approval, states, if I say an aye? All opposed, states, if I say a nay? All right, so the minutes are approved. Next is the approval of financial statements and financial report from June 22. I need a motion to approve. So move. Second? Any discussion? All in favor of pass, approving the motion of the financial statements and financial reports of June 2022, states, if I say an aye? All opposed, states, if I say a nay? All right, next is our committee on conference updates. Councilmember Davis will give us a planning commission committee update.
We had a very short meeting yesterday. We had one special exception permit that came forward. We reviewed it, everything lined up with code, and we would like to suggest that that be set for a public hearing for next month, and that is for the Bustin House. Yep, and it's coming up later.
Okay, gotcha. Any questions? Any questions of Councilmember Davis on the planning commission committee? Okay, next, we're gonna go to unfinished business. Any miscellaneous unfinished business? No? So next is our new business section. We have a donation request from the THS Cheerleaders. Manager Dave?
All right, I think you've got it in your packet unless you want me to read it. I just need to know if the council wants to proceed.
Do we, uh, know the number?
How many cheerleaders are there?
Is this all the cheerleaders? Is it varsity and JV?
How many cheerleaders?
It depends.
Probably between 11 and 15.
But you're also talking, there's the varsity, there's JV, there's football, there's basketball, there's competition. Oh, they do both sports now, yeah.
So how many?
I'll make a motion that we contribute $300.
My second motion.
All in favor of approving $300 for the THS Cheerleaders, states, if I say an aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states, if I say a nay? All right, Todd, so we're gonna do $300. Next, the donation request from Little League Baseball.
I'll be first to tell you. I got this request a couple of weeks ago, and I asked him, could we take it up at the next meeting? So they've already been, but I could have emailed it out, but I didn't do that. So just to be fair, I think it still would like to offset the expense that we got.
And there's 12 boys?
Yeah.
So they would fall within the same. We'll make a motion that we contribute $300.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving $300 for the Little League baseball team, states, if I say an aye? All opposed, states, if I say a nay? Good, Todd, so we're going forward with $300. Next, the SGR Primary Extension Project. Manager Dave?
Okay, you can see a letter that I received from John Watson. VDOT, we did get awarded a grant that we applied for, for a section that's running from the YCA all the way down to Wall Street. So it'll go through the intersection, and if you look at Fairgrounds Road, I don't know how, we didn't get Fairgrounds Road, but maybe we'll get it next year. I just wanted to let you know about that, give you an update on us. Still don't know when, when it'll take place, but it is 100% totally free.
Excellent. It's always great news. Is this the same that had done Tassel Avenue last year? The same?
WLH?
Yeah.
I don't know who got the state contract this year. Odds are it is WLH, but this is just a war from VDOT. They'll bid it out, but I'm fairly confident it's probably WLH.
Okay, so next on the agenda is the IRF Resolution for Sunnyside Manor.
Well, you've got a resolution in here, as you're aware of, and order to get free money, we have to write a request, but this resolution is going towards Sunnyside, and if you recall, we have a contractual obligation to help Sunnyside when possible, and so far we've hit a home run. We've got every opportunity, but just need the approval of that resolution.
So do we need to read it?
You can, or I can, both of you.
Go ahead.
Okay, where is the town council, town of Tassel, and the town IDA desire to submit an application for the industrial revalidation fund grant administered through the Department of Housing and Community Development, whereas these funds would be used for the renovation, repurposing, and the structure known as Sunnyside Manor to increase lodging capacity in the town of Tassel and to support the back of the dragon tourism efforts. And whereas expansion of the back of the dragon business means more jobs, opportunities, and a better quality of life for surrounding areas, which will also create a more effective economy footprint for not only the town, but southwest Virginia as a whole. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council of the town of Tassel and the town of Tassel IEDA hereby support this application for funding of $600,000 through the Department of Housing and Community Development as voted on and planned previously. Be it therefore resolved that the town council and the IEDA hereby grant authority of the town manager to execute profit administration agreements for the proposed Department of Housing and Community Development fund adopted this 12th day of July, 2022. And what we did, we just created the same form for the town council and the IEDA. I've got one more reply I'm waiting on from the IEDA to finalize that.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the IRF resolution? So move. I got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the resolution, states, if I say an aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states, if I say a nay? Good, the motion carries. So next on the agenda is extra pickup wood chipping discussion. Manager Dave?
An area that I've never tapped into is extra pickup charges. We recently, I don't know, in the last maybe five years, purchased a wood chip, a wood chip or a used wood chipper from a local individual, and we've never really set extra pickup prices. So to give you an example, you can take a dump truck, and you can load a dump truck with a brush, and it's a short amount of time because it's not dense. But a wood chip, I can do 10 dump trucks with a wood chipper because it finds it up, but the time involved is astronomical. So we looked at VDOT's rates, and VDOT no longer has Bristol District or Lynchburg or Olden, Virginia rates. They rely on FEMA rates. FEMA's rates for a wood chipper is $35 an hour. Just, it's the same price as an extra pickup. I'm not asking you to vote on it tonight, maybe you'll wanna think about it, but I really feel like if you're gonna put that much equipment on job, that maybe the taxpayers would expect you to be a little more frugal with your charging. So just a dump truck includes a utility truck, and three being an addendum for 35. But then you throw the wood chipper behind it, now you've got flaggers most of the time. And so we'll reevaluate it. I'm just throwing it out there for y'all to look at.
Do they usually have three men on it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they typically have three men. One other thing we got a factor in now, too, is sure. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of cost that's going through the roof, but I was gonna, I would recommend tonight that you up that chipper cost, but I don't have a history putting it in the corner or even to think about something, so we'll bring it up again in August.
Any questions?
Would you charge that by the hour?
Well, it's a, yeah, it's a $35 an hour charge. Yeah, that's what it is. So...
Why do the towns do that other than hire a landscaper or private entity to do it?
Why do we do it?
Yeah.
Well, if we have extra pickups, it's just a circus, and plus, when we cut trees around town ourselves, the chipper obviously saves on multitude hours. So if we use it for extra pickups, we just don't have a price set for that chipper. We can, you know, normally we can haul it off in a dump truck, and again, the chipper can do 10 or 15 dump trucks, which is a short amount of time.
So why would you charge for the chipper and you don't charge for the...
What was the question again?
Why would you charge for the chipper and not charge for leaf pickup?
Well, that's true, I think. I'd like you to recognize, charge for the leaf pickup, too. Thank you, Dan. Appreciate you.
The leaf pickup is a ton of labor.
I know.
I mean, lots of charge more than the other.
I always got mine up on your lot.
I mean, I'm just curious. I'm just curious.
The leaf pickup, the leaf pickup is usually done with the back truck, and we just take a hose out there, but that wood chipper, why goes into that wood chipper?
Yeah, you need to have three men, you need to have a dump truck, brakes, hose.
Now, I agree, Dan, we can reevaluate it all, but taxpayers appreciate you, Dan.
Make the water bill go down.
I would suggest I move on, man.
All right, next is the trucker update. Leanne Reagan?
While she's looking at that, one thing I want to, that we're doing new, is every month, I'm gonna have a department here for to, you know, what's going on in their park. So next month, I'll be in there, and then, you know, you'll have a fire department, and then you have recreation. But every month, you're gonna revolve it around the whole year. That way you get to hear from the park and what's going on out there.
Um, so last month, we had Donnie Brooke, who did the public work update. So I picked out a few areas that I thought you all might be interested in to go over. Okay, some of my responsibilities are to monitor daily cash flows, oversee lines of credit, enter the newly approved budget, present budget amendments, and change those in our system once they're approved, assist the department heads with questions and concerns over their budget, perform monthly budget review and submit it to the town manager, change the rates if you all changed them, post journal entries into the general ledger as needed, prepare financial reports for your monthly council meeting, prepare yearly state and federal asset forfeiture reports, and submit that to the Department of Criminal Justice. I do a fire fund audit each year and submit it to the Department of Fire Programs. I work with our auditors. Audit's a big part of my job, so we have to do all our year-end reports and get that ready for our auditors. And once they audit, I have audit adjusting entries that I have to post. If they have audit comments, I review those and try to respond to that. I do yearly write-offs for property taxes and utility billing. We have statute of limitations that we have to keep up with for that. I have monthly audits for adjustments to accounts. That way we make sure that no one is taking money off of accounts that shouldn't be. I have to reconcile monthly bank statements, EMS, utility billings, property taxes, and accounts payable. I also do insurance claims, keep up with the vehicles and properties if we need to add or remove any, keep a capital asset listing and update it as needed. We do a weekly accounts payable report and pay bills weekly, post EMS payments, and we prepare bank deposits, and then give those to the EMS administrator. I review mils tax and attempt collections, and then if needed, I will take action to collect those methods, uh, take collection methods to collect that. I work with TACS, which is a collection agency, Taxing Authority Consulting Services. It's for delinquent real estate accounts, and they will try to collect on our behalf. If they can't, we will hold options when we need to. We just had an option last month and did very, very well, even though Danny got outbid.
I didn't get outbid. I'll stop bidding.
There is a difference.
I submit outstanding checks to Unplugged Property each year. As I said, audit is a very big part of my responsibility. We're mandatory to have an audit every year. We have to meet the GASP standards. GASP is Governmental Accounting Standards Board. They are the board that sets the accounting and financial reporting standards for all the state and local governments. Last year, we began using a pre-audit service. Hickok Brown and Company is who we use for that. They will review our year-end reports, and they prepare their reports and format it for our main auditors to come in and audit us. We seen very good results with the pre-audit service last year. I was very pleased with the only, they are great to work with. Our main company for auditors is Robinson Farmer Cox and Associates. They are the ones that actually check everything for all the accuracy and insufficiencies. If they find areas of material weaknesses, they'll write an audit comment, and it's their goal that we will correct the comment within that year and have it removed for the next audit. We only had one comment in our last audit. Here's a little kind of cost summary. Last year, the pre-audit was $18,500. It was the first year we had done it, and you can see the last three years of our main auditors. In 2019, it was a little bit higher because we had a sewer true-up audit. That was a little bit higher than normal, but that was the reason that one's a little bit higher. So another part of my job that kind of directly reflects with things that we do is interest rates. So with inflation on the rise and frequent talk of recession, many are looking to the Fed to see what will happen with interest rates. When the Fed raises the rates, it's to boost short-term borrowing costs. It reduces the supply of credit that's available and makes loans more expensive. This can control rising inflation by reducing the amount of money that's flowing through the economy. Lowering the rate will have opposite effect. It reduces short-term interest rates and increases the supply of money and makes loans cheaper. It can cause inflation to decrease, and you could see an increase in hiring because companies are able to grow because it costs less so they can grow and do so. On June 15, 2022, the feds did raise the rate to about 7.75%. It's the third time this year that they've increased. It's a current rate of 1.5%, and it is projected to go up to 3% or 3.5% by the end of the year. So what does that mean for us? So we have projects, and you guys know at the last meeting, our projects were put on hold, and VRA graciously said, hey, we'll hold your applications for a year. So hopefully that will be a good thing for us. But if we have other projects, it could mean that we have to pay out more money. You know, higher rates equal a higher cost to do business. A couple of months ago, we talked about debit and credit card fees. When COVID began, we allowed customers to pay their bills over the phone. It reduced the number of people that come in our office and reduced our risk of exposure. But we had found that this has been a great offering of service to our customers because when we send out that phone call that says, oh, your bill's past due, they call us and say, can we pay our bill over the phone? And they're able to do that. It cuts down the list that goes out to be cut off, but more people that use the service means more fees. But more people that use the service means more fees that we pay. So, here's a chart of the fees that we pay. Uh, this is just based on the last year. We paid a total of thirty-two thousand three seventy-two in fees, our average was two thousand sixty-nine, sorry, two thousand six hundred ninety-seven dollars a month. The four thousand dollar one was when taxes were due. So people pay us, and then they have a credit card bill. But they paid us. So. We have discussed auto draft, and you all were gracious enough to let me try to do that. We were able to get some people signed up. This is in hopes to decrease our fees that we pay. Um, it's only going to cost fifteen dollars to do it. We, we did do it, it was successful to, to all in my knowledge, and we have about a dozen customers signed up right now, so I'm trying to use them as my guinea pigs. And we hope to see our people take advantage of this. So I did some rate comparisons for you all, because this is kind of where you all fall in. Um, you all had to set the budget, and I thought it would be good if you seen where we were compared to others. We're the, we're on these charts, we're always the one that's to the right. Do you all, this is the real estate tax rate. You all tell me if I'm going too fast, too slow on this. This is personal property tax rate. And as you can see, I compare in Bluefield, Richlands, Cedar Bluff, Lebanon, Marion Whiffel, and ourselves. Mil's tax. This is our retail business license. Financial be, uh, business license. Contractor business license. And most of those, I know it looks like a big jump, but it's just point fifteen or point sixteen. Repair, personal service. Wholesale, everyone looks the same. So this gets into your water and sewer. So right now, you can see that we do have a little bit more than the other towns, but if I'm not wrong, this, this year completed air plan rate hikes, is that correct?
Yeah.
So, we do not have any scheduled rate hikes after we have implemented this year. This is if you go over your, um, a lot of two thousand gallons. Oh, that was in town. This is the fee for out of town. This is if you go over your two thousand gallons out of town. And some of these localities didn't have an, an out of town.
For the people that are in there that may not know, the rate hikes for the sewer plan for the upgrade of it, it's now being tabled.
Right.
We had, had no choice.
Right. Um, this is sewer, in town. This is your additional thousand gallons over. Sewer out of town.
You know, one, one other thing I want to point out with these fees too. Richlands has got a plant that's bigger than ours, but they also have a, they have a population that's close to two thousand above us. So debt service is spread out over a whole lot more homes.
Right.
So when you look at these zones, don't think for one minute, don't think for one, for one minute that we're, we're high or we're lower, to kind of, we just won't be there. There's a lot, a lot of raising the thought, if we're in there, none.
All the more reason we need more cameras coming in.
Additional thousand gallons over, out of town. This is your residential garbage. You can see we're fairly in the middle.
You took my trash away from us.
Well, actually, theirs is done by yearly detail, so seventy-five dollars per year, so I just divided it by twelve, and that was what it was. So you just pay once a year for your service over there. So, we just had June thirtieth, which was air end of the fiscal year. And as of right now, this is before any audits entries have been made, you can see where revenues were, you can see where expenses were. So the general fund looks pretty healthy to me.
But keep in mind what's in there.
Yes.
Don't let that fool you too bad. It's got a lot of, a lot of federal funds.
Our water fund, revenue versus expenses, still looks, it still looks fairly good. At least we're positive and have a little bit of left over there. And our sewer fund, which.
That's mainly because we're holding back money for the project.
That is probably a good chunk of that, yes. Is there any questions?
You have a question? The pre-audit that you're doing, is the idea that, that it will decrease your price with the auditor?
It will allow them, if they find something that, um... Okay, so they get air books ready for the regular audit. And if there's entries that needed to be made, like at June thirtieth, um, they will make those entries. So, like an example, if we have mils tax that was collected, um, in June, and it's paid July, so it comes due the next month, they have to put that back in the books for June thirtieth, and they kind of do all that prep work for a regular audit. And then it's kind of a more clean presentation for, for main auditors.
So hopefully it would be easier for the main auditor to go through it, so it may possibly reduce your costs.
Unless they take cash to approve.
Yes.
So they can work cash to approve.
We did switch that, like last year.
Okay.
Um, I also got notified by Rob's former cops that their rates went up, the calls of everybody else's cops. Yeah, it's almost water.
Some county went to the two-page, on the state factory.
Yeah.
And the town didn't, was there a reason?
It's on the agenda for the future, we're, we're absolutely looking at it, sort of the other tank.
I don't understand how it saves you money.
It doesn't really save money, but what, what happens is they are all audited in June, and the cash flow in June is at rock bottom for every locality. There are no fees.
But what is auditing, you know that, it's the historical preference.
That's the only reason they do.
They're going to double their workload to do the same thing.
Well, what, what'll happen, let me give you an example, that's a great question, Doc Brown, but like, we take D R A.
It's my question. I just agree with you.
Boy, it's like chasing my hot off the damn.
How much of the cost do we do double billing, send it out twice a year instead of once a year?
We're gonna, we're gonna look at it.
Most double the overhead.
But you take like D R A when they did, when they look at our audit, or our, our audit is a snapshot of June thirtieth, that's all it is, just like taking a forward picture. And, and it's always less. But if they would have done it three months before, so, that's, that's one of the objectives in doing it twice a year, is it fixes, it fixes their audit and gives a true picture of the audit. So you, you, you audit me at a certain time of the year when I pay deals, Christmas and taxes, and I'm telling you, you know, that picture versus the way I normally operate, it's just a, it's just a perception thing. So, D R A, their audit is beating county to death, when it's actually not perception of their ability to manage.
There's no way to cross that a lot of all your money.
A lot of citizens want it too, because then you don't have to pay that one chunk at Christmas.
Good question, Danny, I like that, buddy.
The market solution, I don't know, you know.
Any other questions? Alright, so next on the agenda is budget amendments. Leanne?
See you, Dan.
Now, we're gonna skip, we're gonna skip that, yeah, we're gonna leave voting in South District. Okay, so next is the sub-public hearing for Tuesday, August ninth, for a special exemption permit for two sixty-nine Pine Street.
Anytime we do an Airbnb, none of our neighbors, so by their, so they go here at next month, seven fifteen.
Tell Danny it's six fifteen.
Motion.
Can I get a motion to sub-public hearing for Tuesday, August ninth? I get a second? Any discussion?
Why do we just, why?
What time?
Seven fifteen.
At seven fifteen?
I'm just curious why we just welcomed him as a new business owner, doesn't mean we have a license to do it.
David, the whole lot, you don't know about what can make, what can happen, but I, I didn't say much.
So, any discussion? So, all in favor of saying the public hearing for Tuesday, August ninth at seven fifteen, stay so by saying aye. All opposed, stay so by saying nay. The public hearing is now set. So, any miscellaneous new business? Didn't see anything? Anybody signed up? No one's signed up to speak? The next council member comments? Anything? One month, one twice? So, can I get a motion to adjourn? I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjourned, stay so by saying aye. All opposed, stay so by saying nay. Meeting adjourned.